I'd like to call the meeting to order. So we're gonna begin the... We have some ruckus. We're gonna hold this one up a second.
That's not my favorite, did you?
I got somebody's eating chips. Who's eating chips? Alderman Moyer, could you begin, please?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Alderman at Large Sonia Berg at the Committee of the Hall and City Council meetings of October 13, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Let me just clarify. Alderman Williams, you are not online, are you? Okay, roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker? Alderman Schoonmaker, are you muted, maybe? He is muted. Alderman Schoonmaker, could you repeat your something, both? I don't think he's here. Alderman Maker?
I think he's frozen.
We can come back. Oh, he might be frozen. Yeah, let's go.
No, he's moving.
Is he? Alderman Waldron?
Uh, aye.
Berg? I'm gonna start. Alderman Berg?
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's a darker finish. Nice.
What, David? Okay, now we're good. I'm sorry, I'm gonna start over again. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams is not here. Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays? Alderman Schoonmaker, I just want to clarify, you were voting aye for electronic, right?
Uh, sure.
Thank you, just to clarify.
We didn't hear anything until...
Yeah, until she called him by name.
Yep.
I thought I was saying present, but I'll happily vote for electronic attendance.
Motion carries. The next item is questions on the agenda. Are there any questions this evening? Hearing none, we'll begin our agenda items. The first item is 2020 Justice Assistance Grant Acceptance. Chief call.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is the second year I've appeared in front of you to ask you to accept the Justice Assistance Grant Program funds. So this year, we were allotted fourteen thousand six hundred and three dollars under the 2020 Edmure Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program. We applied for that. We brought that forward to you. You approved that. We applied for it, received the award. I'd like to ask for your acceptance of the award. Upon receipt of the JAG funding, we will utilize our portion, which will be twelve thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-two cents for our less lethal weapons project. We have to vote three hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-eight cents for NiBRS compliance, which is the 2021 Records Management mandate. And then we have to pay Rockland County one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and thirty cents for their disparate jurisdiction portion, of which three percent they have to vote back for NiBRS. So just to give you a little update on our less lethal weapon deployment project, where this money is going. For the last several years, we've been using these funds to replace our tasers. Probably many of you are familiar with our tasers, a less lethal electronic, conducted electronic weapon. So those have been very effective for us, and as less lethal as deployed, can temporarily render a person incapable of fighting, and we're able to take them into custody. So we will continue to replace those outdated devices, as well as we're gonna move forward by purchasing a couple of bowl wraps, which deploy a Kevlar cord. And I don't know what the best way to show this is. I brought show and tell. So this deploys a Kevlar cord. This is a chunk of the Kevlar cord. Am I allowed to pass this around, the council, I think? This is a chunk of the Kevlar cord, very small, comes out of a much longer piece like this.
Thank you.
Right? And it wraps around a subject designed to wrap around arms and torso and legs, and can allow us to take a person who's an active resistor into custody and avoid any hands-on fight with that person. So staff recommends approval to accept the 2020 Justice Assistance Grant funding.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams? I'm sorry. Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is, will be presented by Tony Lodi, Project 1341, 2020 Stormwater Improvement.
Hello, Mayor. This item is in reference to some stormwater repairs. Staff was given authorization to pursue four repaired locations on an emergency basis, one of which we moved to do in-house with in-house staff. The others, we are looking to contract. And rather than just proceed with time and materials, work for those jobs, we've, Engineering Division has packaged them up into a bid packet, and the result is the contract that's before you now for your consideration. So we're, for these three locations, we're looking for approval of a contract with McFlintock Trucking and Excavating in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to make these necessary repairs, and staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing, Alderman Schoonmaker, did you have his comment?
No. No.
Roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Ayes.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays? That motion carries. The next item, thank you, Tony. The next item is the Illinois Department of Transportation's Enhancement Program Grant Application. Joe Kulmbach?
Joe? Good morning, or good afternoon, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry.
Yep, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can. I had speaker off and mute off. I couldn't do both at the same time.
Okay.
I apologize. What I have for you tonight is, we're looking for approval and consideration for staff to apply for an ITAP grant opportunity. This round of grant opportunity is due on November 2nd, and we need support. There is a match for these funds. Staff is recommending we extend and continue the Nineteenth Street Bike Path to 27th, as you can see on your diagram and map there. We feel that this section of bike path is, it's critical with our bikeways plan and our citywide bike plan. It's also a continuation of the ITAP grant funding we are preparing to build next year. We feel this section of bikeway checks the most boxes for ITAP consideration, and we feel strong that we have a solid project here for consideration through ITAP. And we're here tonight to get your consideration and request that you approve staff's recommendation to apply for this grant funding opportunity.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Waldron. Are there any comments or questions? Alderman Waldron?
Joe, I see on the map that you attached that it's gonna go across the bridge, across 74, from the Villa Park area over across the street on Nineteenth Street. I know it's preliminary, but do you think they're going to redo something with that bridge? Because clearly, that bridge isn't wide enough for a bike path. What are your thoughts there?
Yeah, we do feel like this is the best path. That's why it's drawn there. I don't know, I don't know how much redoing of the bike path or the bridge we can do with this grant, as far as reconstruction of it, besides maybe some updates and improvements. But that is definitely something that we will be considering as we get into the design of it. I know there was a Sam Swartz design presented to council a couple of years ago, and that's really kind of what we're basing this design, this preliminary design on. But I don't know as much as widening that road if that's possible, but definitely some improvements on that, on that bridgeway.
Yeah, I don't know any other way of getting across Nineteenth Street other than moving that, using that bridge, but that is a tight little bridge. It'll be tough.
Yep, we understand the challenges with this one. And again, that's one of the reasons we want to tackle it with this round of opportunities for grants, is this is a tricky one, and it's, like you said, it is critical for our bikeways plan, and this is a continuation of that, and we'd like to tackle these difficult ones and start to build that network of bikeways.
Thank you, Joe.
Are there any other comments or questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any others this evening? We have an other. Dirk Price is at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The other this evening concerns 2900 River Drive. That's the, used to be affectionately known as the Mills at Riverbend. It's the new building, recently changed hands between the university and Mississippi Credit Union. They'd like to have a packaged liquor store in there, and the reason I'm before you as an other is to get your consensus, because under our code, neighboring property owners get consent, and Ben Butterworth Parkway, which you own, is a neighboring property. So I'd be able to see if there's consensus to move forward and allow them to have, it's a majority of the property owners that consent, and this is part of the effort to attract and keep people here in the downtown.
Are you looking for a motion to approve? The consent, or?
Yes.
Motion to approve? Or consent?
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer?
Second.
Second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Went?
Is it staff's recommendation to approve it, or is this just informational and, because I haven't had enough time to process it, but just wanted to hear what staff's opinion was?
We don't have any objection to it. In fact, you know, he's got a lot of vacant space there. Anything we can do to help make it work, I think is, it's a packaged liquor store. It's not gonna have any gambling units in it. You can apply. And it's part of the, you know, we were trying to get people to live in the apartments that are there. This is all part of servicing that.
Alderman, you know what, Alderman Waldron had to stand up.
Are they going into space where the Happy Joes used to be? Because they did sell liquor, didn't they?
Well, Senior Julio sells liquor, as does, what's the other one that's there?
Seron. Okay, he's there, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that that might, that might be the case. This is the space, I believe, that's between the two.
Alderman Potter?
Have the other property owners been surveyed?
There's no other property owners than the number two.
Oh, the...
We're the only ones.
We're the only other property.
So he owns that property?
The credit union and the college are not considered close home.
Are there any other comments? Alderman Parker?
So this is right across the street from Ben Butterworth Parkway, and I believe that there's no liquor allowed on park grounds, correct?
That is correct.
Would we be providing some signage, so people wouldn't think, hey, I'm just gonna grab a six-pack and go down and sit out by the river and watch the boats go by?
I think we have rule signs up now that we can, I'll check with Eric, and that would probably be proven here.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays? That motion carries. Thank you, Dirk. Now we'll move to our informational administrators' update. Marty Vonnick?
Thank you. The only thing I had tonight is to remind the council that our very first budget session, work session, will be Saturday, the 24th, at eight to one. We're gonna maintain the schedule that we originally came up with, so we'll be sending out copies of that schedule to everyone. That's all I have today.
Thank you.
Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Does anybody have any questions on the budget plan? I don't know if the council has seen the updated schedule, have they? I know I got to see it.
It didn't change a lot, but I'll send it out after the meeting to everyone, make sure.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, because I think the last schedule had some alternative dates in it, so let's just make sure everybody knows.
But they didn't see that one either, so.
Oh, okay. All right, well.
So we'll wait until we got it completely ready.
Thank you, Marty.
You're welcome.
I'd now like to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the public that'd like to address the council this evening? Come on up. All you need to do is state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Jan Stoker. First of all, I would like to express my gratitude to City Council for allowing the Dear Wyman House to host a small herd of nanny goats this fall. They did a wonderful job, and we look forward to future collaborations with our temporary ground staff, so thank you very much. But the reason that I'm here tonight is to speak in favor of an ordinance that was put forth by the Historic Preservation Commission. The idea for the ordinance was born out of a discussion that was held at a meeting of the Historic Preservation Consortium. This is a group of people that are representatives of established historic preservation groups throughout the Claude Cities area, along with a few movies. This group shares information and ideas on ways to further historic preservation causes in our community. I was thrilled to hear that the Moline Historic Preservation Commission was the first government agency in the area to consider requesting a 60-day hold on the demolition of structures over 50 years old. My husband and I have attended historic preservation meetings this year and have followed the commission's journey in writing this ordinance. The city of Moline is very fortunate to have such a commission. To find a historic preservation commission in a community of this size is unusual, and it demonstrates that the city values its past and takes the responsibility of historic stewardship seriously. The city is also very fortunate to have a commission that is comprised of a dedicated group of members who put in long hours of research, thought, and work into creating this ordinance. I saw firsthand how they considered the impact of their fellow contemporary, as well as future citizens, while trying to balance how to do justice in preserving the history and legacy of those who came before them. I witnessed their debate and discussions, hammering out what would be the best proposal for Moline. They worked with city staff to ensure the request was reasonable and would not add an arduous layer of work for or be burdensome to staff or citizens. Currently, as I'm sure you're well aware, a property owner can apply for and receive a demolition permit in the morning, and the building will be gone that afternoon. This quick turnaround does not allow preservationists enough time to document or salvage anything from the property. A 60-day hold on demolition gives preservationists the time they need to work with property owners to document the buildings, do a little research, and coordinate salvage efforts before the structure, its history, and the artistry of a building is lost forever, because, as we all know, once a building is gone, once a place is gone, it's gone forever. That said, a 60-day hold does not stop a property owner from demolishing the structure. It only slows them down for 60 days. Before we moved to this area, in case you're unaware, we just moved here a few years ago, my husband and my family and I have vacationed here. We were drawn to Lago Marcino's, and if I had to be honest, I would say that my husband was drawn to the building, and the kids and I were more interested in the ice cream. But when we went inside, we could immediately feel the history the walls held. It was authentic. Not only did we feed our stomachs, the building's historic integrity allowed us to feed our souls. There's something about being in an old building that connects one to a community and its people that a Walmart just can't quite manage to do. And while both add to our quality of life, only one makes Moline different from anywhere in USA, and I, for one, do not want to live in anywhere in USA. Moline has a vast array of three-dimensional art throughout the city. This art is found in houses, warehouses, bridges, commercial buildings, carriage houses, garages, and sheds. It makes Moline an interesting place to be. Walking, cycling, or driving through Moline piques one's curiosity by subtly encouraging people to think, oh, wow, that place looks interesting, and ask, I wonder what happened there. These are not questions I ask when I am in our neighboring community of, oh, I don't know, Bettendorf. Sure, I can appreciate the split-level ranch, but after seeing five of them within less than a quarter of a mile, I'm tuning out my surroundings and I'm focusing on my destination, unable to really appreciate where I am. The variety of architectural styles and structures makes Moline special and different from anywhere in USA. Please remember that, right now, the owner of the former John Deere house can get a demolition permit and have that house torn down the next day, before anyone has time to document that structure. Again, the 60-day hold does not stop the demolition, but it does give the community time to salvage some of the legacy that happened in that significant structure and preserve a portion of John Deere's legacy. I find it interesting that so many people think that preservationists are difficult or obstinate people who want to block progress. On the contrary, preservationists are among the most compromising and forward-minded people I know. Preservationists work with property owners to find solutions, not to create problems. They are interested in blending old with new, but I believe their ultimate goal is not to save historic structures. Their ultimate goal is to encourage people to be good stewards of their properties and to value their property's contributions to the community. Preservationists want to encourage property owners to encourage, or to consider the rippling, long-term impact of an owner's actions, and what those actions will have on the environment, the economy, neighborhood, and future citizens. The proposed ordinance is not radical. It is not constraining. It is the next logical step for Moline, a community that has demonstrated a record of valuing, preserving, and promoting its important history. My kudos go to the Historic Preservation Commission for their work in bringing it to council, and I applaud city council and city staff for considering it as a progressive step forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Is there any other public comment this evening, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Just state your name.
I'm Mark Smolper Hunter. And my wife just said I was fairly recently here in Moline. Historic preservation and history have been my passion. I came from the Cedar Rapids area for many, many years. I was chair of the Cedar Rapids Iowa Historic Preservation Commission, and have spent a lifetime of promoting preservation communities like Cedar Rapids and Moline. And I'm here to also support the proposed amendment to the ordinance of Chapter Eight, to allow the Moline Historic Preservation Commission to have the ability to review a demolition permit and be aware of what is being potentially torn down in the community, and now I can potentially put a hold on it for the purposes of acknowledging that this is something that's disintegrating from the landscape. This would be for structures 50 years in order. And why 50 years in order? That is the standard set by the National Register of Historic Places. You can be on the National Register if you're 50 years in order. And we enacted a similar process in Cedar Rapids shortly after a major flood event that we had up there in 2008, and also because of concerns that, like Jan mentioned, that we had situations where a historic landmark was being demolished without any of the public's knowledge, and they would drive by and see it gone. And in one instance, we had a building that was supervised, that's designed and supervised by Louis Sullivan Carter. We were not able to save that building because we didn't have this in place. The review, once it was enacted by the city council and the city of Cedar Rapids, we had the ability to review each demolition permit, and most of the time, eighty to ninety percent of the time, we realized it was something that might not be historically significant, but just being aware of it to at least document something that's changing on the urban landscape. And again, the issue of that being done, because sometimes people say, oh, it got torn down. I don't, I don't even know what it looked like anymore. I wish I knew we had a picture of it or a documentation of it, and a potential architectural salvage. A recent example in Moline was a significant bank structure up on 16th Street and 16th Avenue. If you might be aware of it, it was torn down this past year, and I went by to watch the demolition. I noticed all kinds of architectural elements were left behind and a building came down with the building. Light fixtures, windows, ornaments, that could have been very useful in the preservation and architectural restoration of other structures within your community, and potentially could have helped tell the story of Moline, and that story is not lost on that point. It's gone. And having a potential to review the demolition permit by Historic Preservation Commission opened up so many possibilities, and Cedar Rapids and other communities are, this is very much the next step the Preservation Commission are doing. It promotes a lot of different options for property owners to at least be educationally a little bit more aware of what they have, whether it's a private property owner, developer, or even the city, to have a little bit more education about what they own. And sometimes, they're grateful to know that there is a Historic Preservation Commission that can help educate them, the history of what they have. In many cases, it can offer an opportunity to potentially change the plans for a property, maybe keep the historic building, add on to it, maybe potentially, we had many situations in Cedar Rapids where having the ability to now review and potentially put demolition on a 60-day hold allowed in the saving of structures to be moved to different locations, incorporated into new combination old projects, and at the very least, allowed documentation and preservation of historic material. And it just made for a more inclusive community environment with the public and the city government. And so I would encourage that, and I will also attest to the fact that this has been carefully and considerably thought by your Historic Preservation Commission, and I have nothing but the highest accolades and professionalism that they have exhibited in the thought process of proposing this to the city council. So thank you for your time and allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment this evening? Is there any further business for the Committee of the Hall? Hearing none, we're gonna close out at the Committee of the Hall, and we're gonna open our council agenda this evening. Alderman Schoonmaker, will there be an invocation this evening? I'm gonna say that's a yes.
Yes.
Okay. Moving with the collective allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for this time. We thank you for the opportunity to work with all of our city leaders. We ask for blessing across our city and across our country as we work towards this election in difficult times. Amen.
Roll call, please. Alderman Parker?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Schoonmaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Hall and Council in closed session meeting minutes of October 6, 2020. Second reading ordinances. Councilable 3030-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 34 Waters and Sewers, Section 34-4100, purpose and intent of the Moline Code of Ordinances. Councilable 3031-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 31 Taxation of the Moline Code of Ordinances by amending Section 31-1100, Hotel and Vacation Rental Use Tax Imposed. by amending section 31-1100 Hotel and Vacation Rental Use Tax Imposed. Resolutions. Councilable 1101-2020, a resolution amending budget resolution number 1159-2019 by authorizing various changes to line items in the fiscal year 2020 budget and authorizing the finance director to do all things necessary to complete said changes. Councilable 1102-2020, a resolution declaring 15 city owned vehicles as surplus property.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is it, oh, roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Councilable 1103-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with McClintock Trucking and Excavating Incorporated for project number 1341, 2020 Stormwater Improvements for the amount of $142,650.
Motion to approve 1103-2020, Parker?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Councilable 1104-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to accept and attest to the award of $14,603 from the US Department of Justice, 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Motion to approve 1104-2020, Parker?
Second.
We have a motion by Parker, a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Councilable 1105-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to and make certain certifications and assurances related to the Illinois Department of Transportation's enhancement program, grant requirements and conditions to design and construct a multi-use trail in the city of Moline and supporting a grant application to the Illinois Department of Transportation for the enhancement program grant and authorizing staff to do any and all things necessary to prepare and submit said grant application to the Illinois Department of Transportation for the enhancement program grant.
Motion to approve 1105-2020, Parker?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Councilable 1106-2020, a resolution authorizing the creation of the position of assistant finance director waiving the requirements of section 24-2201A concerning advertisement of the position and directing the city administrator to bring forward a candidate for appointment to that position together with any required adjustments to the classification and compensation plan.
Motion to approve 1106-2020, Parker?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Waldron?
Yeah, I have, I have a kind of concern about waiving the requirements of section 242202A. We typically apply, let people apply for a position. We just don't award it. I do not understand since the position has been open so long, why we need to rush to fill it without following our policy to get the best person available. And so I would like to hear why we need to skip our policy.
The position hasn't been opened yet. You authorized it at the last meeting.
Right.
So it only opened a weekend. It was to deal with the workload that's now been changed and imposed on Carol to get us through that and this budget season. And the idea was to get the person in place and hired as quickly as possible. That was the conversation last week.
And I disagree with as quick as possible. I don't, as quick as possible gives you somebody that's around or it's in the, in the organization. I believe in getting the best candidate possible, which means recruiting, posting and going after somebody, not necessarily just slipping somebody in quickly. So I understand what you're saying. Disagree with this though.
Alderman Parker? Oh, I thought you were waving before. Are there any other comments or questions? Alderman Went?
Is there already someone that we're targeting, somebody? And that's why we're, we're feeling comfortable with, with this approach?
My understanding is that Carol does have a couple of candidates in mind.
Alderman Waldron?
The other point I would like to make is, and I think the city administrator pointed it out last time, we have 35 openings in the city currently, 35. And now we're going to go ahead and fill an assistant to the finance director, which we have not had before. We have 35 open positions to include the city engineer, the economic development coordinator, the city planner, the water plant manager. We have numerous critical positions that need to be filled. And I believe we should get at filling those, not up to and including utilities positions which have no bearing on the general fund or property taxes. And this is the position we want to move forward with first. And I have to tell you, I don't agree.
Are there any other comments or questions? Alderman Potter?
I'd like to echo the comments of Alderman Waldron in specifically regarding utilities. I think that the water plant manager and the additional staffing in the, in the utilities are especially critical as we head into the winter season, as he suggested. Those, those positions are not in the general fund. I'm concerned that we don't have enough manpower in the water division or in the utilities division. Once we start seeing the potential for water main breaks and that sort of thing, we'll be having to sub that out to contractors if we don't, if we can get them. I would, I would recommend that we send a directive to the administrator to immediately begin filling those positions in the utility division especially.
Are there any other comments? Alderman Went?
Well, I agree. In fact, I had this conversation with the city administrator earlier today about filling a number of those vacancies. I agree with Alderman Waldron on that. And it was to me that next Saturday, that plan is going to be put forward to us in a, in a process of hiring those people. So I, I look forward to that. That being said, while I want those key positions filled, that, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't get this one filled as well. And so I'm going to support this, but I, I agree that there's a number of crucial positions that need to be filled sooner than later.
Any other comments? Roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Berg?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. That motion carries. Councilable 1107-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a city artwork licensing agreement between the city of Moline and the Moline Community Development Corporation to accept a sculpture commissioned by the Illinois Community, I'm sorry, by the Moline Community Development Corporation for installation by the city on the city's wall at 12th Street and 11th Avenue.
Motion to approve, to approve 1107-2020.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Apologize. Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. First reading ordinances. Councilable 3032-2020, an ordinance amending chapter eight Buildings and Other Construction and Building Services, section eight dash 2101 Amendments to the Building Code, paragraphs W and X and chapter 25 Planning and Development, section 25 dash 4112. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you, Janine. Thank you. Dirk, did you have something? Oh, okay.
There are questions on that last agenda.
No, we're okay. I'm going to go around the council chambers, see if anybody has any comment or anything they want to share with the council for council business. Alderman Parker?
Yeah, a couple of things. Earlier this week, I believe it was, or maybe it was last week, I, probably last week, actually. I reached out to, or responded back to one of Tony Lodi's emails regarding some of the work that's being done at one of the residents close to Morgan Park, asking if they could get city staff to remove some of the debris that's still left over from the, the Duray Show. It's on the eastern side of Morgan Park. It's off to the side, but it's some pretty decent sized trees and brush. I'm assuming that he's gotten that forwarded on, but Tony, I mean, Marty, if, could you look into making sure that that gets cleaned up before winter comes, which is coming awfully fast it seems. And secondly, my question goes out to probably Joe on this one. Are we any further on getting 19th Avenue funded through a grant or engineered or anything?
Is, was that a question for JV?
I think it's a question for Joe or JD or Marty or any of the above.
I'd like to.
Or anybody that I haven't thought of.
Alderman Parker?
Sorry, I was getting my, getting the phone off speaker again. Yeah, we have, we, we put in for next year CIP. And staff is beginning to continue with the survey and begin some design on, starting at 16th Street heading east to 12th or 13th Avenue, Orange Street, 12th and 13th Streets. So what we'd like to do is do that section. That's the worst section of our condition pavement. And we'd like to do that in-house and then in spring of 2021, we're preparing to apply for what's anticipated to be a round of STP funding to complete that street, 19th Avenue, all the way to the border and with some grant funding so we can leverage our, our money that way as best as we can. But that's where we're at with it now. When that CIP is brought forward, that, that section will be on it for next year's construction project.
Thank you.
Marty, did you have anything?
No, that's good. Yep.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Alderman Parker?
No.
Thank you. Alderman Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got two things. One, thank you in advance, I guess, to Rod and his group involved with a cleanup that the realtors do down around the mall a couple of times a year and staff is always great about providing some garbage bags and coming and picking them up after we're, we're done. So we're doing that tomorrow morning. But the other one I wanted to talk about is I just wanted to recognize or let you guys know that Buck Went, my uncle, passed away this last weekend. He, former mayor of, of Moline and Alderman. And he was kind of the person that, while my folks always did public service and volunteers and stuff, he was the one that taught me and showed me to do public service and not be afraid to do it in the public eye. And so I appreciate everything he's done for our community and, and those sorts of things. But he just passed away this, this last weekend.
Thank you, Alderman Went. And our condolences to your entire family. The Went family has been an important family in this community and I'm sorry for that loss. Alderman Potter?
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, I, I happen to run into the group of trades apprentices from the Black Hawk College that were performing some work down on the riverfront the other day and it looks like a good program and I hope we can, we can do that again with them in years to come.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. Alderman Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to follow up on Alderman Potter's thoughts on filling the utilities position. And I'd like to make a motion that we direct the city administrator to start the process and go ahead and fill the vacant water and sewer and stormwater utility positions.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Schoonmaker?
I'll defer to Went because I was going to ask for his, you know, what he was, what was going on Saturday.
Alderman Went?
Question, do we know how many openings we're, we're talking about in the utilities? And which utilities and how much we're talking about as a, as costs with, with all of those positions? Or are we, is it just, I, I, I want to better understand what we're asking. Is it to get to a staffing level that we were at two years ago before COVID? What are, what are we directing? I just want to put some parameters on what we're talking about.
I think we're, my, my motion is to go with what is budgeted for 2020, the year we're in. And that would be in the water, wastewater and stormwater utility positions.
So one thing that, that I'm aware of is that on the 24th, we're going to have this conversation about what the reports are coming back from the study that we had done, about what positions are critical and what positions maybe could be better managed.
If I might interrupt, that posi, that, that study was for HR, IT, engineering and building division. There was nothing that we talked about here publicly about the utilities.
And I'm not saying that those positions wouldn't end up being filled from that study. And so I think that there's like a, we want to look at it globally before we make decisions of what positions to hire from the outside. There may be an opportunity there that would make sense instead of having.
I appreciate your input, but don't agree.
Okay. Alderman Went?
With that, I, I guess my question would be, would it be more appropriate to do this specifically like the water plant manager? If that's a position that we want to be filled, I think we can give clear direction and we can then see results. My, my fear is with what this motion is, is like, just hire, but all, all the people. Well, our, our budget is only good for till the end of the year. And a week from now, or I guess on the 24th, we're starting the budgeting session for next year. I, I know we're going to have a plant manager. I don't know what our budget is going to look like for, for next year. And so I, I think that it would be most appropriate if we're going to do selective direction to staff. I've got no problem with that at all. If we're doing this blanket thing, that feels like it's part of this, this budgeting process so that we've got a better understanding of what our budget looks like and, and what our reserves look like and what the, the budget for next year is going to, because when you hire somebody now, it affects next year's budget as well.
Are there any other comments? Alderman Potter?
Well, in, in, in response to that, the, the utilities divisions are, are enterprise funds. They have nothing to do with the general fund, have no impact on the, on the general fund reserves. And I just think that, you know, we have an excellent water department, you know, we, we've won awards. We've got problems in stormwater, we got, we got the winter coming up. I just think it would be important to fill those vacant positions. We are short on manpower in those areas. There's little doubt about it.
Janine, oh, Alderman Schoonmaker?
Wasn't, wasn't our directive to the, the different departments that if they needed help to bring that request to us? And I understand that they're trying to, you know, help shoulder the burden of what has been caused by COVID. And I understand that things are looking a little bit better than we thought. But right now, we're. a little bit better than we thought, but right now, we're rushing to hire these people, and nobody from their direct staff supervision is saying, hey, I need somebody next week. I'd prefer to defer on this and wait until we get through the meeting on Saturday, get a little more information, have a good discussion about it, and now staff can have the time to prepare for that, and make sure that we're going into this fully aware of what we're doing. I don't disagree that it probably is time to hire some of these folks back. I just want to do it eyes wide open and not on a knee-jerk reaction here at the meeting.
Alderman Went?
So with that said, I'd like to amend the motion to direct staff to come back to us with the positions that they feel need to be filled, and what the timeframe for the filling of those positions should be.
I'll second that motion.
We have an amendment by Alderman Went, and a second by Alderman Berg. We're now considering that amendment. Marty, did you have a comment about that you wanted to?
Yes, I wanted to say to everyone that myself and Carol have been working very diligently with all the staff directors on their issues regarding open positions. We have open positions in police and utilities and development, and those are all important positions. And we're taking those open positions along with the plans for 2021, the anticipated report from GovHR, the retirements that we provided through incentive. And if we can wait till the 24th, we'll present all those plans with a very aggressive plan for utilities to hire back very quickly, some of those people that Alderman Waldron mentioned. So I just, I'd like to counsel the city entire plan before we make a decision tonight.
So our next meeting is the 24th, isn't it?
Yep.
So is that what Alderman Went is proposing? Is that something that could be prepared for that meeting?
Yes, we'll have that all prepared.
Prioritized kind of timeline situation?
Yes. And I want to say Tony and JD have been very cooperative in getting the information that we need to make those decisions and to make those evaluations. So I commend them for that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments regarding this amendment? Roll call on the amendment, please. Oh, I'm sorry, one moment. Alderman Parker?
So I just so I'm clear, are we postponing, are we tabling this until staff comes back to us with their wish list, for lack of a better term? And when is that going to be? I kind of miss that.
Well, my understanding of the amendment was that we were going to wait for them to bring back the list, and the list would be prepared for us for the 24th, for that work session.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Berg?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays?
That motion carries. We're now considering the amended motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the amended motion? Alderman Went?
I just want to make sure I understand, Alderman Potter and Alderman Waldron, that you voted against the amendment. Is it that you feel that the budget that we did a year ago is more appropriate than getting the feedback from staff on what they really need right now? I'm just trying to understand why you're anti-getting the feedback from staff, which is, as Alderman Schoonmaker had said, was the directive originally, come to us anytime you need any of these things filled, bring that to us, and then we'll make the determination. Help me understand.
Alderman Waldron, I think you're-
I think we did make a thoughtful process when we did the 2020 budget. We determined that the utilities positions at that time were all needed. They are still all needed. Utilities, all three of them, have not been affected by COVID. Yes, the revenue's down a little bit, but basically because we allowed people to get on payment plans. But we will collect all that revenue eventually, or most of it. But I think we were down $274,000 in the utilities, out of $16 million budget, Tony, between the two big utilities?
Eighteen.
Eighteen million dollar budget. We're down about 274. Has no effect on the general fund whatsoever, and I think we need to get moving. Your amendment, the thought process just delays it again, delays it now to the 24th. We could post these positions. If we do reorganize out of the general fund and people want to apply for them, they're certainly happy to do it. This is just another delaying tactic. When you listen to about reorganizing, it sounds like some thought process has already been put into effect about these departments that we talked about are going to be reorganized. We have not discussed anything about reorganizing any of these departments yet, but already we need to wait so we can move people out of those identified departments into the utilities. So that predisposes that we have not been transparent here about what we want to do, and I couldn't disagree with the process more. I hope that answers you.
I think that your suspicion is not founded. I think that we know-
I hear your opinion, I disagree.
Well, it's not an opinion. I mean, I could-
It is an opinion.
I mean, it's not an opinion for me. I can tell you.
It is, that's what I'm hearing.
By experience, huh?
You're giving it to me.
No, I'm saying that there hasn't been any discussion about it. I haven't seen the report that has been contracted.
I've just been told we need to wait to look at the reorganization before we fill these positions.
Oh, I didn't hear that word.
Did I not hear that from the city administrator?
I don't, I didn't, okay. Alderman Moyer?
Yeah, I just, I think we haven't discussed it yet. We don't know what it is, and we need to look at it before we make decisions, that's all.
It's not going to affect the utilities, one way or the other.
Alderman Went?
Well, I've got some, I mean, if some decisions have been made without me knowing about it, or the rest of the Aldermen knowing about it, yeah, clearly, that's a problem. But we also have hired full-time staff to run the, and now I feel like you don't want to wait and listen to what their recommendations are. The comment that we're down 270-some thousand dollars, to me, that's real money. I mean, that's, if we're going, and I don't know if that's something that's moving forward, or it's just a blip for this year, but I think that that's why we do the budgeting, because 270,000, I think, is a couple positions, at least, on whether we can afford those or not, or if we're going to wind up drawing down our reserves more than what we want. And we just passed a new policy regarding those reserves. So I guess from my standpoint, I don't disagree with you, Alderman Waldron. I just want the facts, rather than us just saying, hey, a budget that we created six months before COVID ever happened, and the world was, quite honestly, a different place than it is now, I think is probably not the place to look to. The place to look to is our professional staff that said that they've got recommendations to give to us, to Alderman Moyer's point, for us then to consider, and we can accept it, or reject it, or go down a different path with our policy. So I'm looking forward to hearing what staff's recommendations are.
So are there any other comments? Alderman Parker?
So we're going to get staff's recommendations on these positions for water. Are we going to be getting them for the other departments as well that are down staff?
Everything.
Great. Yeah, I'd rather get the information and make decision based on information and moving out forward. So although Alderman Potter and Alderman Waldron, I totally agree with you that it's time to start getting us staff back up so we can perform at the highest level possible. Just want to be sure that we are right-timed on that staff, whatever it happens to be.
Alderman Went?
Yeah, as I think Alderman Waldron, you and I had this conversation, I don't know, in the last week or so, that, you know, you can only be on a diet for so long. And we went through a tumultuous time with COVID and everything that has been going on, trying to figure out where we're at. And I couldn't agree with you more. You can't run a city at that lean of a workforce forever. And so it is time to start hiring back and doing those things. I just think that we need, that we should do it based on our professional staff's recommendation and the facts on the ground today, rather than the facts on the ground, you know, 10, 11 months ago.
Any other comment before we go to vote? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Berg?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays?
That motion carries. Alderman Went?
And I hate to beat a dead horse, but I want, I do want to understand Alderman Waldron and Alderman Potter, that they don't want the input from staff, or are you just voting against it because it wasn't what you had originally proposed?
Alderman Waldron, do you have a response?
Take this for what it's worth. You've touched on it twice, that you've been waiting for staff to come talk to us about needing positions. I think Alderman Schoonmaker mentioned it also. Listen, what little staff is left is not walking up to that podium anytime quickly and saying, I need four employees. It's just not going to happen, not with the environment we've fostered here. So that is just not going to happen. And all I'm talking about is the utilities. Utilities have not been affected by COVID to any large degree. They will not be affected by COVID next year, and that is my problem, and we are wasting another two weeks, just like we've wasted eight months on the utilities. We could have filled these utilities positions six, seven months ago, and that's where I'm at with them.
Alderman Waldron, I do want to point out that Chief Gault approached the council, it wasn't long ago, to hire two officers beyond what was budgeted. Do you recall that?
I do recall that, and I think at the time, I think-
Was it like a month ago?
It's not unbelievable to think that we are going to reduce firemen and policemen. I just don't see that happening. But in every other department, that has happened extensively. We're down 35 people.
There's a lot of communities that have laid people off, and I think we're lucky that we haven't, and we're lucky that we're able to offer those officers positions. Potter, did you, I want to give you an opportunity if you have anything to say. Alderman Went, did you have something to say?
Yeah, and if that is the environment that they don't feel comfortable coming and asking us, clearly, it sounds like you've had those discussions with them. If this has been an ongoing thing, like you said, for months and months and months, why is now the first time that it's been brought up on the council floor?
I've had zero discussion with staff about that. It's based on my experience and watching what's been happening here. I just know they are not going to walk to the podium and ask for people. Police and fire are different. And as a matter of fact, I've had the city administrator approach me about filling the fire position that's open, the fire marshal. So the only thing we have filled is public safety, or we have attempted to fill. I think the other departments are gun-shy to walk up to that podium and ask for people. That's my humble opinion, and I've talked to zero employees about it.
And I'm kind of feeling like this is a dead horse now. I appreciate your concern. If there's something new and relevant that either of the Aldermen on the screen, Alderman Went?
Then I'd like to make a motion to reiterate what we had said before, that we direct staff in all positions at any time, if they need help with something, to come to the council and ask for it.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Went, and a second from Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion on this motion? Alderman Waldron?
If that makes the Aldermen feel better, feel free to-
Oh, my goodness.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Berg?
Of course.
Alderman Berg?
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays?
Motion carries. Anything else? Thank you. Alderman Berg?
Mayor, I have a question. I think we asked, and this actually is for Marty. Marty, I think you were going to send, email us a list of the retirees that took the early retirement. I don't, I might have missed it, but I don't believe we've received that yet.
We'll get that resented, Alderman Berg. It did go, but we'll resend it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think I have anything to say, thank you. How about, is there any public comment this evening? No? Do we have anything from staff? Anybody want to address the council? Chief Gault?
Thank you. I just want to direct your attention to October 24th will be National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. The Moline Police Department, as well as our neighboring communities, are partnering with the Drug Enforcement Administration to offer our free events. We've done this before. It'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll hold it at the Moline Police Department. This year, we're going to offer kind of a drive-through service. Be able to just come in, drop off your prescription drugs that are no longer needed in your family, and make sure that they're safely and securely disposed of. They don't go into our precious water system, sewer system. They can be disposed of properly. They don't go into, fall into the hands of children or illegal possessors. And so we will accept any type of prescription pill or prescription patches, no questions asked. We will not accept liquids, inhalers, or sharps, or needles. Officer Stephanie Janicio will be there to greet you, help get anybody through the process, drop them into our bags, and we'll safely deposit them with the Drug Enforcement Administration. So again, that'll be October 24th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Thank you, Janine. Anyone else? Hearing none. Do we have anything from Alderman Moyer this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 120/2C2, and employment compensation discipline performance or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 120/2C1.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Moyer for executive session, a second with Alderman Potter. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker? Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Could we please clear the council chambers? We're going to-